Good evening and welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Regular Session Meeting for Thursday, August 15th, 7:30 PM. Just a reminder, a recording device will be used during this meeting and I will let the public and the watchers of this video be aware that the township solicitor is not here this evening, but she is here via phone conference on the line if you hear some echoing in the background. I'm going to open the meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start tonight with the swearing in of Officer Daniel Miller.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Markosi. I'm the police chief and I'm very honored tonight to introduce Officer Danny Miller to you. Danny's being sworn in tonight to a full-time position with the Police Department and his oath is going to be administered by Board of Supervisors Chairman Kyle Scribner. Danny graduated from Springfield High School in 2005. Between 2008 and 2010, Danny obtained his firefighter and EMT certifications. He graduated from Montgomery County Municipal Police Academy in June of 2018. He served as a volunteer firefighter for Black Rock Fire Company, Montgomery County. He has worked as an EMT for various EMS organizations in Montgomery, Berks, and Chester Counties. He has been working as a part-time police officer for the borough of Roersford until tonight. And he was hired by East Brandywine Township in January of this year and tonight he's, I'm very honored to announce his appointment to full-time. So without further ado, I'm going to hand the Bible to you. Put your right hand on the Bible and repeat after Mr. Scribner.
I, Danny W. Miller.
I, Danny W. Miller.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of the Township of East Brandywine.
The laws and ordinances of the East Brandywine Township.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a police officer.
With fidelity to the best of my ability.
With fidelity to the best of my ability.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The law without consideration.
The law without consideration.
To a person's race, color, or sex.
To a person's race, color, and sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
He's never going to hear the end of that one.
So everybody who came for that, you don't want to stay around. It's totally understandable if you want to get up and go out with Officer Miller and his family and friends.
Okay, now we're going to open the meeting for public comment for non-agenda items. I'll remind everybody that rules for conduct of public meeting established by Resolution 2008, the time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. So I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment for non-agenda items. Yes, ma'am. Please just come up, state your name and your...
Hi, I'm Kristiana Ottinger. I live at 8 Hawk Hill Road and I was here last month to talk about redistricting reform and I requested that you consider passing a resolution to support that. So I'm hoping that we're still thinking about this and that I'm here today in case you have any questions and to ask that you put it on the agenda to vote on it for the next meeting.
So I do know that we are still in the process. We actually just got a notice from one of our solicitors regarding another case law from a different township. So obviously with that, that particular township took the stance that politics should not be part of the Township Supervisors and that I believe that their stance was they were not going to intercept it. That being said, the other issue that I had had was there was several different letters circulating that it was insinuating that the both parties, Republican and Democrat, on the county level, were behind this, but we're still not getting to the exact root of the exact letter that they received. We've gotten several different copies of different letters and it's very confusing. So right now, to answer your question, we just got that from a solicitor just three days ago, so it still is in the works. I don't know if we will be able to give you a definitive timestamp on when we'll be able to do that or if we will be able to do that because quite honestly, we haven't even digested the letters that just came through.
Can you explain? I don't know if I can help clarify or figure out why you're getting different...
I think I brought it up to you the last time. One of my, not concerns, but one of my questions I had was the commissioners received a letter that they stated that they were in favor of, is the way that it was explained to me.
They wrote a letter.
That letter has since been, I don't want to use manipulated, but it's been changed to say, not the exact letter verbatim, but a letter similar to this was approved by the Board of Supervisors, by the county commissioners, and that's what we're trying to get to the root of. Again, I can tell you that the other township has decided to take politics off the table. We haven't even had a discussion outside of getting a couple of letters right now. So I don't want to be unfair and give you an answer right now because it would only be my answer, but we still do have to talk about it.
Okay. My opinion is that it's not a political issue. It's a democratic issue, just so that everyone has a fair vote and a say. That's why it's not a project, but something I'm passionate about, why I bring myself to come here.
And as I said, it's not been kicked to the curb. It was just discussed within this last week via that letter.
Okay.
And just for what it's worth.
All right. So what do you suggest I do at this point to follow up with this?
I would say maybe if another week or 10 days, if you were to contact us via email and see if we were able to talk about it, because as I said, we've only gotten so far two pieces of information, one being that letter from a solicitor stating that another township just stepped out of the equation. And obviously, we're not going to base our decisions on other townships, but we have to have all sides.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll email you.
Any other public comment for non-agenda?
Hi, Steve Ulrich, 1200 Horseshoe Pike, Downingtown.
Beth Ulrich, owner of Joe Burns Beverages. Joe Burns was my dad. Steve and I are here tonight in response to the June 6th meeting where you were all talking about us instead of to us.
It was in response to how the terminology was being used regarding eminent domain by a lot of the supervisors when we even had the opportunity to go into or have the opportunity to negotiate how we're handling this right-of-way issue for 1200 Horseshoe Pike. The reason we're here today is because we did finally get it staked out. Nine years, we've been asking to have someone to take a look at our property and show us where the exact lines are going to be. They put one line of stakes for payment, they put another line of stakes for a new right-of-way. So basically...
We've been waiting for an actual proposal for quite some time now. No one has provided one and yet somehow, we've heard people in the township meeting saying we're somehow to blame for how slow this process has been. When exactly, when exactly will the township take ownership over its poor management of this right-of-way issue and stop using us as a scapegoat? We are the longest retail business in East Brandywine, being here 33 years. We have sponsored baseball teams every year, sponsored the run for the parks and fireworks every year. We donate to countless fundraisers. We donate to the East Brandywine Fire Department, the Boy Scouts, and with this said, where's the support from our township to us? It seems like developers are the only ones who get the attention in this township. The whole issue with us and the township is a matter that we're being accused of holding up construction. Hey, I'm the fly in the ointment, as people call me. Well, that's a totally unfair statement. No one has asked to meet with us since 2011, except for the 2017 PennDOT meeting. So your statement during the meeting where we met after that was totally untrue.
I'm sorry, wait. My statement's saying what?
I have it on tape if you want to hear it.
You thought we had a meeting in 2018. I believe you were corrected by Scott that it was a 2017 meeting when we met with PennDOT.
And at that time, Fran from PennDOT said this plan was totally outdated and to redraw it, and then we will reconvene. Well, you know what? That never happened. And that's the same exact words that Kristen used during the June 6th meeting, and I had that on video if you'd like to see that too. So it took nine years to spray paint a lawn on our front lawn. And we asked that for nine years so that we could make an educated decision as to what would happen with our property. And that happened Monday. At that time, two workers from Penone came and I said, can you get Nate Klein down here so that I may speak with him? Because I'm making an effort to meet with you guys, even though it's not reciprocated. So they said, yeah, we'll message him. And then they marked our land. And then when they were finished, I said, is Nate coming? Well, we messaged him. Okay, well, is he coming? Well, I don't know. I messaged him. And so I waited and I waited and 5:00 came and I drove home. And there he is, standing at the DNB bank parking lot, talking to his guys. So he wasn't out of the area. He was right down the road and he couldn't have stopped and talked to me because during the June 6th meeting, he said, why don't we talk to the Ulrichs and see what their concerns are? So instead of him having to come to me, I said, why don't you get him to come here and I'm available to discuss things with? And that never happened. So you can't say that we haven't made efforts to make a negotiation, because we have. And Kristen, in the June 6th meeting, said twice, I don't think they're ever going to agree to a negotiation. And then the whole thing started with eminent domain, Jay Fisher.
So we don't even know where to go from here. The township has offered money to us under a statute of eminent domain. Basically, that $4,000 that was offered for paying for legal fees, engineers, whatever specialty, I don't even know why the township should take on that and pay that amount. We did have representation when we came in before. We still have representation. She is not here tonight because she's on vacation, but she was sure to watch the video when it's posted, as far as the public meeting goes.
Okay. And in regards to the intersection, how is one lane going westbound, making a drag strip, going to help the people in the morning going eastbound? I literally have a picture on my phone from today, going eastbound, down 322, and I was stopped in traffic before the township building going down the hill. And then I was stopped again and I said, oh, there must be an accident on the bypass. Okay. And I get on the bypass and it's moving perfectly fine.
So basically, you're working with a 10-year-old plan, not even planning for the next 10 years. I'm not a, and I don't claim to be anywhere near an engineer or traffic engineer, but I have 26 years of watching traffic out my front door at my store. I can tell you how the accidents happen. I can tell you where the backups are. I can give you a lot of information, which we did share two years ago and when they said we do need to reevaluate this plan.
It was never done.
I have the plan here. If you'd like to pull it up and you have created a turn lane currently on the new plan that is before the Sunoco going eastbound. It ends. There is no turn lane to have a car stopped with a turn signal on to turn into Sunoco going eastbound. You have one landscaper with a trailer on the back of his car. You're stopping traffic eastbound. Now he has to wait for two lanes of traffic to turn into the Sunoco, thus leaving, keeping any of my customers coming or going, anyone going eastbound on 322. I really think this plan needs to be reevaluated.
So they marked our property...
Real quick, we do have an agenda of three minutes. You guys have had...
Okay.
I do want to respond to some of your questions.
That's fine. Sure.
With respect, I'm happy to answer them. As you guys have known, I've sat down with you numerous times before this and many times before I was even elected, by the way. And I think we're forgetting that. I have a sincere interest in your situation. I feel as though there was, from the get-go, there was a problem there.
So why was there eminent domain discussed June 6th?
So I will tell you with respect to your property, it is a state road. 322 is a PennDOT issue. Our township has taken the stance, and I assume I can say this, with regards to...
Yeah.
Our township has taken the stance of we are not going to get involved with PennDOT's eminent domain request. So we have said from the get-go, so I'm not sure where this eminent domain is...
I have it on video of you saying however in this case.
If, no, no, no. What you have on video, if anything coming from me, if you're alleging I said it, is unless the Ulrichs or Joe Burns Beverage were in favor of it, then that's the only type of...
In favor of what?
I will gladly play for you right now if you'd like.
I'll tell you what I said. I don't need a tape recorder. What I said is I'm never in favor of eminent domain. If a resident had to go through eminent domain and there's ways to do it where it's a favorable, I don't know, I'm not a...
Friendly condemnation.
Friendly condemnation, I would be all in favor of that, if it was a friendly condemnation. Never would I be in favor of eminent domain and nor has it been approached the township to do so, except for by the state, which we turned it down.
Okay. So if it's a state road, I know, if it's a state road and PennDOT is in control of that, but isn't Polte responsible for compensation?
Polte is responsible in an agreement they made for a highway occupancy permit with PennDOT. How they handle that right now has always been PennDOT and Polte. However, they, in my opinion, turned the plate over and put it in our lap and asked us to get involved. We decided as a board, no, we're not going to get involved. It's not our problem.
Then why is it being discussed by the board? That's where...
I think it was being discussed because...
This is where we're having...
Because of the $4,000 Jason brought up.
Can I add clarification here? I'm sorry.
Sure.
I'm coming from remote. The settlement agreement with Polte requires Polte to perform traffic improvements at the intersection of 322 and Hopewell Road. They're required to get all necessary permits from PennDOT and they're required to implement and construct those improvements. Part of the settlement agreement, however, obligated the township to attempt to acquire the right-of-way necessary, and that would be the right-of-way on your property as well as the fire company property. So that's where the township got in the middle of it. The board has gone on record, the current board has gone on record, to say that they are not in favor of exercising eminent domain. Nobody was suggesting that that was to occur. What I was suggesting was that I did not believe that you should be out of pocket any expenses in obtaining a lawyer or obtaining engineer to help you evaluate what was being proposed. The reference to the eminent domain code was to tell the board that if there was going to be a condemnation, whether it was friendly or not, which again, they're not in favor of a non-friendly condemnation, that under the eminent domain code, you would be entitled to reimbursement of up to $4,000 for legal fees, engineering fees.
We understand that.
Appraisal fees and survey fees. So I was actually trying to accommodate to say, hey, they're not asking for this. They're not asking for their property to be revised or taken in any fashion. They're going to need professionals help them evaluate it to see if it can make sense for any future development plans that they may have. And therefore, I had suggested that to facilitate a better meeting and to have you be further educated on how it impacts your property, that you retain counsel and that you can have your own engineer or traffic engineer assist you. And so I was trying to tell the board that I thought it made sense for them to agree to reimburse you what the law would otherwise allow you to have. So that was the reference to the eminent domain code and the $4,000.
I get that. The meeting was in June, however, and Nate said, why don't we contact the Ulrichs and see what their concerns are? Well, that was June. It's now August. So you know what? We put together our own negotiation package and I'm going to hand that to you now.
Thank you.
And we're willing to negotiate with you for that part of our property and sit down with the engineers to revise the plan. But let me be very clear, let me be very clear. If you go for eminent domain, which it sounds like you're not, but if you do, it won't be years before you see any of my property.
The board has already taken the stance. So we're good. Thank you.
We're going to leave this closed.
Understood.
For the board.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you.
I see myself, I'm A.M., Curtis Miller, Representative Chrissy Hulahan's constituent advocate. Sorry, but I do have to get to the next one.
All right, we have to stay to the, I have to give the people of the audience the chance first, unfortunately. I apologize. It's the way we have to run this, so. Anybody else for public comment on non-agenda? All right, seeing none, now I have to do...
Fine, I understand. Anyway, I'm Curtis Miller. I work for Chrissy Hulahan in West Chester, so she represents all of Chester, southern part of Berks. We're just going around to all the township and borough meetings in her district, talking about what we've been doing since January, as she's a freshman. So this is all of the resources we provide are on here and our content information, so I'll leave these. But really quick, we've closed about 400 cases since January for constituents. Through that, we've returned over $800,000 to the district, whether that's an IRS repayment, social security benefits, or Medicare benefits that we're helping to return. And we responded to 42,000 correspondences, whether that's a phone call, an email, or a letter in the mail. We also just got notice that a grant support letter that we wrote for to someone in our district received $2.1 million for a grant that we applied for. We've held nine town halls and we're about to hold a 10th. We hosted USDA Secretary Sonny Perdue to talk about mushrooms and dairy farms in Pennant Square. We held a roundtable with Pennsylvania Attorney General Josh Shapiro on the opioid crisis. We worked with Sikorsky to fight for those jobs that we're potentially going to lose, we're going to lose in Coatsville, working on the Sunoco pipeline to improve safety. Chrissy serves on the Armed Services, Foreign Affairs, and Small Business Committees in the House. She co-founded the Bipartisan for Country Caucus, which puts country over party, bipartisan with a lot of past service members. She's taken a lot of steps to reduce the cost of prescription drugs, fighting opioid epidemic, funding public schools, and paying our teachers. So we have two district offices. The content information is on these pamphlets. We have obviously our DC office. If you have any questions, you can call us, but otherwise, have a great day, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Okay, we're going to move on to the minutes of previous meetings, Board of Supervisors, August 1st, 2019.
Motion that they be approved or submitted?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll go on to the Planning Commission for July 10th, 2019.
Motion to be approved or submitted?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's report, Mary.
Thank you. Bank account balances as of August 15th, 2019 are as follows. General checking, $2,159,707.20. General fund investment, $913,525.96. State fund, $365,264.99. Referendum open space, $2,760,572.20. Open space, $785,050.27. Traffic impact, $1,633,937.56. And there are a total of 78 checks in need of approval for the general fund, four for the state fund, and five for the open space fund. And these include check number 276 payable to Hurricane Masonry regarding the Bonsville Mill proposal to be discussed later in the meeting.
Thank you. Let's take a minute to go over the finances and see if they're in order.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Township manager's report.
Chair Scribner?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mary has another state.
Yeah, thank you very much. I do have one additional report. Right-to-know update. During the 2019 year, the township has continued to receive a substantial number of right-to-know requests. Given this, I thought it would be beneficial to include a monthly report, which reflects the number of requests submitted and the quantity of records provided in response. For the period of January 2019 through July 2019, the township perceived a total of 74 requests with 10,663 pages of responsive records provided, not counting those handled by the Police Department. You will find included in your meeting materials a few examples of recently received requests, which often require a significant number of man-hours to complete. Although staff time devoted to right-to-know is not tracked, legal expenses incurred to date total $13,673.48, as noted in the financial reports this evening. I would like to thank our dedicated staff members and the Buckley Bryan Legal Team for their diligent efforts and ongoing assistance in fulfilling these requests. In particular, Luke Revan, Noranne King, and Lisa Torachi, who provide their support on a daily basis, as well as Kristen Camp, Ryan Jennings, and Ally Fidanza for their outstanding guidance and oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Township manager's report.
You sure?
Thank you. Last month, I reported that we had met with representatives from Brandywine Conservancy and Natural Lands Trust on updating some of our ordinance language on wetlands, repairing buffers, green stormwater infrastructure. In reporting that, Mike Mize from the Hedger, Cobberts, and Run HOA Board contacted me and asked, or took me up on the offer, that the Conservancy and Natural Lands Trust would meet with homeowners and homeowners associations to help them better manage some of their stormwater facilities within their development, or for homeowners, the same thing, plus open space. So this past Tuesday, I met with representatives from the Conservancy and Natural Lands Trust along with three of the HOA Board members. We walked through certain areas of the Hedger, Cobberts, and Run development. Brandywine Conservancy will, basically, they took several pictures, took notes in the rain, and they're going to take the information they gathered during the meeting, review it, make suggestions for improvements that could be done by the HOA or considered by the HOA. And if the HOA wants to move forward, find some potential grant funding sources, identify those, and possibly assist with submitting grant applications. The work, any work proposed under this would be coordinated through the township. And I'd also encourage other homeowners associations and home... And I'd also encourage other homeowners associations and homeowners, individual homeowners, to take advantage of this free consultation. You don't get things free much, which is part of the work on improving our streams and water quality that not only Natural Lands and Brandywine Conservancy are doing, but there are several other environmental agencies that are doing that. And this is all being funded by William Penn Foundation Grant. State Representative Danielle Free-Loten has scheduled a town hall meeting Thursday, September 26th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the Brandywine Wallace Elementary School, 435 Dilworth Road in the township. She'll be inviting residents from East and West Brandywine Township to hear about current legislation in Harrisburg and provide the opportunity to ask questions about issues that the residents may have. And I did forward to the supervisors that they're also invited to attend this meeting. I heard today that Senator Muth would also be attending. And the last item I have is Monday, I learned that construction of the Horseshoe Pike-Bollinger Road and Warren Lane intersection, Warren Lane's in the Mapleview Development, is scheduled to begin on Monday, August 19th. Alan Myers is a contractor for this project. There's been sewer line construction that's already started for the Mapleview Development that's separate from the, somewhat separate from the intersection improvements. There's initial survey and utility location work that actually began this past Tuesday, August 13th. Initially, they're going to start grading along 322 and removal of blacktop, the guide rail, et cetera. That's scheduled to take approximately two weeks. They'll start on installation of storm sewer facilities along the highway after the Labor Day holiday, and that's expected to take three to four weeks for the upgrades and tie-in. Grading to complete the widening along Horseshoe Pike and Bollinger Road will begin approximately September 23rd. On October 2nd, Bollinger Road will be closed at the Horseshoe Pike intersection to all traffic until completion of the project, which I just learned today, they've added a week to that. So it's October the 25th. They expect to, to complete the project, and of course, that's weather or other unforeseen circumstances not hindering the project. So any additional information that we get because of delay in the project, we'll have on our Facebook page, our township website, and other social media sites. That's all I have. Thank you. Turn it over to Luke for the assistant manager's report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have two upcoming events to report on this evening. The first is Community Day in the Park, which will be this Saturday, August 17th, beginning at 11:00 a.m. This Brandywine, East Brandywine Township Institution will have all your favorites, the Antique and Classic Car Show, Vendors Crafters, Pony and Hay Rides, Bingo Food, and Music. Our Kids Fun Zone will have a new look. There will be four to five free bounce houses that all can enjoy, and a zip line will be available for a small fee. On the same day, but earlier in the morning, is the Run for the Parks 5K. This is the sixth annual run that has raised almost $35,000 for capital improvements in the township's parks, and is a lot of fun. Registration information may be found on the township's website, Facebook, or on the Race menu website. The first event, the Kids 1K, begins at 8:30 a.m., and the main event begins at 9:00 a.m. And I'd like to take a moment to thank the many volunteers who make both of these events possible, and I'd also like to thank the many sponsors, some of whom are represented in this room, for their financial support of these events in the park. I am grateful. Second, this evening, the Budget Committee, tasked with preparing a draft budget for 2020, will meet for the first time next Monday, August 19th, at 7:00 p.m. Among the first items of business include the election of officers, a setting of dates for remaining meetings, and sending solicitation to both department heads and committee chairs seeking their budget requests for the coming year. Historically, the Budget Committee has provided this board with a draft of the budget by your November work session, this year, November 7th. The board has then taken action to adopt a preliminary budget at your November regular session, which is November 21st of this year, and a final budget at your December work session, which will be on December 19th. While we were at this early stage, and before the committee dives into the minutia of producing a balanced budget for your consideration, I would like to take this opportunity to solicit the board for any strategic goals you may have for the coming year. You're welcome to discuss this night, or, or send me emails, and I will in turn share with the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to discuss anything with Luke tonight to put him on the spot? You're lucky. All right. Don't say anything else before we do.
I'll see you later on the agenda. Thank you.
Moving on to the Building Inspector's report.
Before the month of July, there were a total of 15 building permits issued, three zoning permits issued. There were 18 use and occupancy permits issued during the month. 153 inspections were completed, one failed inspection. Total fees collected by the Building Department, $5,509. That's respectfully submitted, Noranne King, Building and Code Secretary.
Thank you. Matt for the Road Masteress Report.
Thank you. All of the paperwork is complete, and insurances are in place along with the bonds for our 2019 road paving project. This year, we are repairing and overlaying Hopewell Road from Rock Raymond to Creek Road, the entire length of East Fisherville Road, and Zinn Road from East Reeseville Road to Hadfield Road. The contractor is Mecko Constructors, and the project cost is $467,444. We anticipate the work to start next month, probably the middle of next month. In February this year, I presented an RFP for engineering and design for a new maintenance garage located near our, and adjacent to our salt shed. We are planning for a five-bay garage and an addition to the salt shed. During the February meeting, the board tabled the decision on moving forward with the RFP.
Kristen, are you moving chairs?
Sounds like a motorcycle rally downtown.
I can't hear you. I'm not doing anything.
I was hoping it wasn't your stomach. Go ahead.
I asked the board to, if they would take a look at the materials and ask any questions they may have about the project during your next work session. We are prepared to proceed if directed to do so. In our server room, there's an AC unit, which hasn't been working for probably almost two months now. I'd obtained three prices. Honeywell was $6,069.72. FXT was $4,500, and Madison was $9,800. Since that time, FXT has withdrawn his bid due to the owner of the company being on one of the township committees. I am requested that the board accept the second bid from Honeywell for $6,069.72. Is there any discussion or?
We, I guess my question is more to Kristen. Are we in jeopardy of not having a third bid? If the, if the third bid was actually considered to be a conflict, should we get the third bid, or are we okay having gotten the third bid?
I think you're okay. I think you got appropriate telephone quotes and have, I think that's fine.
The, the threshold for, for telephone quotes is $11,100.
Well, there you go. Okay. I'd say Matt just finish up, and we'll go back to that then.
Okay, thank you. The second is also related to the heating system. My repair technician has determined, along with airco technical support, the necessary parts to repair the boiler. The boiler is essentially out of, out of service right now. And you would wonder why you need a boiler this time of year, but large buildings are set up with reheat, which is necessary to keep the building dry and everything. So they recommend replacing the ignition stepper board, power supply, and the air fuel valve. Changing the air fuel valve would require replacing hoses on either side, and the technician also mentioned the control box ribbon cable was burnt, so they should replace, they should be replaced. Parts and labor for replacement is $8,878, and parts for this boiler are obviously expensive. And the technician mentioned that a new boiler is between $45,000 and $55,000. I request that we have Honeywell proceed with the repairs to this boiler. And then lastly is the sale of 98 GMC. We have an opportunity to sell the 98 GMC without going through the online bidding process and the expense of advertising. And I spoke to a representative of Newland Township Road Department who was interested in the truck. The second-class township code permits the township to sell to another municipality equipment without the need to advertise. I've estimated that the truck is worth $7,500 based on prices obtained on the Internet, and the other representatives sort of agreed that it was about the same. So I mentioned to the representative that I would need permission from the board to sell the truck at that price. The representative also said that he would need approval from his board. So if Newland Township is agreeable, I am asking permission to sell the 98 to Newland Township for $7,500.
Okay, thank you, Matt. So let's go back to the never-ending Honeywell issue with our township AC and boiler. Obviously, $8,878 is cheaper than $45,000 to $55,000 to replace it. However, I feel it necessary to note that Honeywell has been, in my opinion, not very, not very solid in terms of the product and, and/or their, their service. That being said, I think we, we have a lot invested in this system thus far, and I think we need to continue to maintain it, especially when it's down. So the other one was for $6,069.72, and that was for the, the conditioning system in the server room, which I know you've had a fan running in there for the better part of the year.
Not quite that. About three months. Seems like a year.
Yeah, it seems like it's been a long time, but, okay, so what are your guys' thoughts? You, you had some interest in looking at it? Did you have a chance to look at it?
No, I was going to set it up with him. So, I mean, I'd like to take a look at it real quick, but I can do that, you know, anytime.
What about you, Jay?
It's way out of my leg, so I have no idea.
All right, so I guess we can put the motion on the table to approve the repairs after, say, next week. That will give you an opportunity sometime if Jason, seeing that that's his wheelhouse, can take a look at it.
Was Jason going to look at the air conditioning system for the server or the boiler? So I would approve the Honeywell.
Boiler's fine.
Proposal. The boiler's fine?
No, no, so he'll look at the boiler. So we'll go ahead and get a motion to approve the $6,069.72 for the split air conditioning system for the server room.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion that the $8,878 be approved after, we'll give it a full week, so the following Monday after this coming week, having Jason had an opportunity to look at it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then make a motion that we authorize the sale of the 898 GMC to Newland Township for $7,500.
And I will second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Chief, for the Police Department report.
Good evening. The report for July 2019. Police Department recorded 2,315 incidents. We conducted 213 investigations. Department had seven criminal arrests, four summary arrests, two warrant arrests, one juvenile petition was completed. We investigated eight traffic accidents. I want to correct two typos here. We had 188 traffic citations, and we had 69 traffic warnings. And officers logged 10,596 miles of patrol. There was no training completed for the month. Two other, just one quick comment is that we will be at Community Day, and we will be handing out sunglasses, frisbees. Are they taking the?
Cutout?
The what?
Cardboard cutouts.
Cardboard cu, oh, we have cardboard cutouts, if you want to get your, put your face in there and look like one of us. So that was a big hit at the pizza night. And you have copies of the monthly investigations and the officer activity reports.
I wanted to clarify for the record, we had just talked about Jason taking a look at the, at the boiler. I wasn't insinuating that Jason's company fixed the boiler, I was insinuating for a second opinion. We don't want a conflict of interest with that. We're not going to allow, obviously, work to be done, but just for a second opinion, just for the record. Okay, thank you, chief. Going on to move to the East Brandywine Fire Company report.
Good evening. In the month of July 2019, the fire company responded to 90 total emergencies. Thirty-three of those were fire incidents. Fifty-seven of them were medical emergencies. Thirty-eight of those occurred in East Brandywine Township, 42 in West Brandywine Township, and we were called for assistance 10 times throughout the month, with an average of just over 11 responders per incident. From fuel usage standpoint, East Brandywine, we used 160.1 gallons of fuel, and West Brandywine, we used 74.6, totaling 234.7 gallons. There were no fire injuries or fatalities nor estimated fire damage. For the month, we had three training activities with 23 members at each event. As an update, we personally want to thank, on behalf of the chief officers and all the members of the fire company, to East Brandywine Township. We came to the last township meeting and posed a problem. We are in a booming success of members. We have actually too many members for the amount of fire gear that we actually had. We could not uniform firefighters successfully. So we came to East Brandywine Township, and East Brandywine has donated 10 sets of fire gear for our members to outfit them so that we may remain in an active response condition. So on behalf of the chief officers, as well as the fire company and our 10 members who can now have gear, we appreciate it and thank you guys very much. In addition to that, to show our expansion as well, last night, we invited two new members into the fire company as well. The beautiful thing about our retention and recruitment, we actually recruited one, the firefighter is fully certified, ready to go, has many certifications, trumping many of the existing firefighters we already have, including fire officer, inspector, as well as trainer. And then we also brought in a fully certified EMT as well. So two brand-new members who can contribute to the fullest capability immediately. So we welcome them into the service of the fire company. And we will also be in attendance on Saturday at the community event, and we look forward to seeing everyone there.
Fantastic news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no old business this evening, so we're going to move on to new business. We have an award contract for a community park trail extension and repairs, and I'll turn it over to Luke for that.
Yeah, actually, we have two items, both pertaining to budgeted purchases of, basically just procurements. And before we dive into the two of them, I'm just going to reiterate the thresholds for the board and for the audience. The threshold that requires three telephone bids is $11,100. The threshold that requires sealed advertised bids is $20,600. So item XA on your agenda here is a contract award. This is a budgeted purchase, and it falls into the latter category. It's in excess of both the sealed advertising requirements and prevailing wage, which is $25,000. On Tuesday, August 13th, Panoni and Scott, as representing staff, opened the bids received for the construction of a trail extension across the Permian Winters property, and also repair of some spots of trail in the community park. The lowest qualified bidder is Construction Masters LLC of Reading, Pennsylvania. The lowest qualified bidder is Construction Masters LLC of Reading, Pennsylvania, and the total bid was eighty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Um, I mentioned that this is an anticipated and budgeted, uh, item. Um, the, the particular budget, um, arrangement for this item is a little complicated. Um, we do not write a budget for our open space referendum fund. This is the fund that is, uh, funded by the, um, uh, earned income tax. We don't write one because, uh, it is, it's project-dependent. In any given year, you may or may not have an individual who's willing to either convey in fee or as an easement, uh, open space to the pri- to the township, so we don't write a budget for that. That said, that budget committee had recommended, when we acquired the land the trail's gonna go on, that fifty thousand be set aside, uh, for the construction of the trail. Uh, that's a recommendation to you, the board, you, the board, actually, um, determine whether or not to authorize the expenditure. Also, in the intervening time between when they made the motion to both acquire the land through friendly condemnation and, uh, when the, uh, uh, the amount was set aside for the construction, staff wrote and received a PICO Green Region grant for ten thousand dollars, which has been deposited into the open space referendum fund. Because we anticipated that there were also repairs in the park, we set aside ten thousand dollars for, um, uh, the portion of this project that is repairing existing road. And we decided to pay for that from the open space developer fund, which is funded contributions from developers in lieu of providing recreation and open space opportunities in their develop. The last wrinkle is that we also budgeted funds from that same fund for the, um, uh, construction of the bathroom in Phase One of the community park. One portion of this total bid package includes the paving of two additional accessible spaces in Phase One of the park. So, I can say it's a budgeted item. It's rather hard for me to say it's an over-budget item. It, it is what it is. The apparent low bidder is eighty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy. This was discussed with the Trails Committee at their meeting on Tuesday, and their recommendation to the Board of Supervisors is that you accept the bid with Construction Masters.
Um, I, if I, I'm gonna paraphrase here, but fifty, fifty was set aside, ten for the PICO, fifty was the original set aside amount, ten for the PICO, ten for repairs, so now we're at the seventy. Then you said that, that, uh-
Right.
Real quick, then you said that there was, uh, work for the bathrooms that was included in this bid?
Correct. About six thousand, I, I asked Nate to do by the square footage of McAdam that would be laid down, how much is for the two accessible spaces that are actually part of the bathroom project, which has a separate grant funding from DCNR, and that's about six thousand six hundred. We'll just round up six thousand seven hundred dollars.
And when is the bathroom project, I mean, are we even at that point yet?
That would probably be an RFP in the f- spring of, of next year.
Where I'm going with this is, are we able to take that money off of the, uh, off of this, this bid for the six thousand some-odd dollars for that project, only because we, we don't know for certain it's going to happen in the fall, and I just envision a weed mess if we go ahead and get this done ahead of time, and it's, and it's left.
I think you have to understand that what Luke did with this bid package, which I think was wise, was he in, it, the bathroom project would necessitate us paving two additional handicap parking spaces adjacent to the bathroom. So, because we're already having this, having paving done, Luke included that.
Oh, so it's gonna be paved completely, not just stone at the bathroom?
Well, we have to provide two additional. We already have two handicapped paved spaces. We have to pro- provide two addition- additional spaces to satisfy the grant. So, rather than having a paver come in and do just two spaces, he's including it here because the paver's gonna be mobilized on-site and doing other paving.
We will have sewer, water, um, prefabricated building, and, uh, concrete subcontractors on the project for the bathroom. But an actual McAdam, the, we can get that done now, since we have a, an asphalt contractor.
Is it gonna be a problem with contractors riding over it, crushing it, anything of that nature?
It wouldn't necessarily be, because there's still a way to access. Where we're, i- if you're familiar with Phase One, there is a stucco white, uh, pavilion. And then just north of that, there are three separate playground areas. One that is a blue and yellow children's playset, and then two that have swings. The, the location of the future bathroom is proposed, is the, the children's playset. And so you could access that by only driving across gravel in Phase One. I, I suppose it's possible that they would prefer to use the accessible spots, but I would-
Just wanna make sure that we're not spending this money and then having it get trampled all over by the contractors.
It's a fair question. They can still access the site.
All right, so maybe, maybe if this does get approved tonight, then we go ahead and we, we put that as part of our prerequisite that it gets, it gets, um, staked off so that we don't have to worry about that, um, throwing good money away. Any questions?
I'll make a motion, we approve the, um, low bid of Construction Masters Services LLC of Reading, Pennsylvania, in the amount of eighty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars, uh, for the work that was outlined in the RFP.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Luke, again.
All right, so the second purchase falls in a different category. This is in the gap between the eleven thousand one hundred dollars and the twenty thousand six hundred dollars, and that's the three telephone bid territory. Um, in the audience, I have members of the, the, uh, Bonsville Mill Committee, uh, including Chairman, Mr. Buxalla. If you wanna, y- y- you wanna come up to the lectern in case we gotta ask some questions of you, I'd, I'd appreciate that. This is also a budgeted proj- this is a, a, a budgeted purchase. Um, it is for stonework at Building C in the Bonsville Mill Park. Uh, the, the, the general construction procedure over there is the volunteers are framing out and stabilizing the buildings. And as they complete each section of frameout, which is done, uh, with volunteer labor and, uh, uh, township supplies, it becomes necessary to, to repair the masonry around that frameout. And so what we have is, um, a, a bid for masonry work in the park. Um, it is for seventeen thousand dollars, and it requires a, uh, prepayment of eight thousand dollars, and the total contract is for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, this is, uh, masonry work, as I mentioned, Building C in the community park. We have received other bids. Um, they're, they're not even close. This is a, a very generous offer from a masonry contractor. And Jim, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Um, I'm not sure if Luke mentioned, but this is a budgeted item. Uh, it's within the work scope that was proposed, uh, the beginning of this year, and, uh, is listed as a, um, a work item in, in the budget. I'm not sure if Luke mentioned that or not.
He did.
Okay.
Well, I, just unrelated, but to the topic, what, where are we with, um, the discussions on the plan, the overall plan? There are things we're changing, um, with the grant and so on and so forth. What's the latest update on that?
Well, we're waiting for, um, you're talking about the garden project in front of the mill buildings. Uh, we, we secured the county grant, and we secured a commitment from you, uh, for a ten percent match. Um, we, uh, have an application into the state, the DCNR, uh, and we are waiting to hear from them for the balance of, um, of that budget. Um, we expect to hear something in the timeframe of November. Once we understand that we have the funds secured, then we will get into the details of, uh, the bid documents that are necessary to secure the contractors, uh, for the work. Uh, we would, we, you know, this falls well above the, the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold, uh, for prevailing wage and all that. So, um, we, we would have to, uh, have, uh, a detailed, uh, bid document put together to, um, to secure a contract for that.
Okay.
So, the, this, this work is separate from, uh, the garden project. Um, it's focused on Building C, which is the, uh, three-story, uh, mill building in the, in the center of the park. Um, we, we have a great deal with these guys, and they, and beyond the, the work that they're gonna be doing on Building C, they've also made a commitment to volunteer their time for some other ancillary, uh, work scope items at the park. Um, so I, I don't think we're gonna get a better deal than, than what we've provided here.
I have no questions. I'll make a motion, we approve the Hurricane Masonry LLC, uh, contract in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars, fi- seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for the masonry work on, uh, Building C at the Bonsville Mill Park.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, um, subdivision zoning, um, we're moving on to, um, I guess, Kristen, I'll turn it over to you, if you're still available, um, for the-
Turn.
East Brandywine Center, Carlino Development, acceptance of the alternative transportation plan, authorization to pay just compensation, uh, including Mark Kaplan and Peter Miller in this conversation.
So, the board on June sixth approved the last, um, revised plan for the Carlino Development, for proposed shopping center. As part of that development, there is a proposal. Obviously, there's a highway occupancy permit that needs to be obtained for various traffic improvements, including a connector road. That is in the process to be, that is being reviewed by PennDOT. Um, part of the PennDOT review process and the issuance of the highway occupancy permit requires the applicant to submit an alternative transportation plan, which they have submitted, um, both to the board as well as to your traffic consultant, Andy Heinreich. Andy Heinreich has reviewed it, and Andy explained this to me. I don't typically get involved in the PennDOT process, but basically, they have to indicate, I'm gonna read his email, that the applicant would be responsible for in-kind off-site improvements that would be discussed in their ATP at Hopewell, Bonsville Intersections, and/or Little Washington Intersection. The proposed connector Road is being constructed by the applicant instead of any off-site improvements that were identified in their traffic impact study. The alternative transportation plan is the documentation required by PennDOT to implement the desirable improvement, i.e. the connector Road, other than what may be identified in their traffic study. So the township, through the acceptance of the land development plan, which again, contemplates the connector Road being built, which is also consistent with the declaration of taking that was filed, um, your traffic engineer is satisfied that the ATP that was revised by the applicant is satisfactory, and that correspondence from the township should be sent to PennDOT, um, indicating that. The letter that the applicant provided, we did not feel at, um, referenced the correct plans and the correct revisions that were made to the ATP. Tom Esti in my office revised the letter and circulated it to everybody, including applicant's counsel, as well as the board. We have a letter that Mr. Pierceall, um, already signed, but has not been authorized to send by the board. So, to be quite honest, this is something that I think normally doesn't even go to the board. It's something that, it, as part of approval of a plan, you know, you have now basically affected or given authorization for your sewer, I'm sorry, your traffic engineer to take any necessary steps that would be needed to, uh, complete the improvements proposed by your land development plan. Given just the nature of this development, however, and the, you know, the, the history that's gone on, I think this is something that was brought to the board to get specific authorization for Scott to be able to send this letter to PennDOT. This is needed for PennDOT to be able to issue the HOP. I understand that that process is still in the works. Obviously, BBA and LNR are interveners in that process, and I think the applicant still has, you know, outstanding conditions and outstanding, um, comments to, to send back to PennDOT. This is, this is one item on a review letter from PennDOT that needs to be completed. To the motion, if the board is comfortable, would be to authorize the letter that was included in your packet to be sent from Scott to, uh, PennDOT.
Well, I have a couple of questions. I'm looking at the June twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, letter that the township receives from Carlino Commercial Development, uh, requesting this alternative transportation plan to be accepted. And on the second page, it says, "The second highway occupancy permit condition statement obligates Carlino East Brandywine to be responsible for rebuilding the retaining wall in front of the Waters Farm Barn after we acquire the Waters property, and will be binding to any successors and assigners to run with the title of the property being developed." I believe that he's, this letter is mentioning the two-acre barn and home that Carlino does not have equitable ownership of or any ownership of. How are we, we need, I think, we need some clarification on the whole barn wall and, uh, I don't, you know, without having any consent, there's no copying of the owner of the barn on this letter. So I think that we need to check to see if they have permission or some kind of written authorization to do so.
I can't speak to that. That's something that your traffic engineer, in reviewing the ATP, did not raise as an issue. So I don't, I can't speak to the location of the retaining wall.
Kristen, it's Peter Miller up here, just to answer any questions. So, um, we have- Sorry.
Sorry. Some people quiet, some people loud. You're welcome to.
Um, we have an agreement with the Waters family, um, to move the wall, and the wall is in the PennDOT right-of-way, so it's not township business. You and I have discussed this before, so it's not, it's not a township. I, I said that, uh, condition statement that we submitted to PennDOT, it's one of their conditions, and we have submitted the easement to do the work that we've had with the Waters family for the better part of ten years. So it's actually, so wait a minute, wait, so wait a minute. So it's actually not the matter that we're discussing, just to be clear.
Well, it's part of what your, your letter said to the township, uh, two months ago.
Okay, but it's not, it, we can address it further, but it's not the ATP issue, Jason.
But it's the alternative transportation that's part of the condition for the, for the HOP.
It's not, that's not the case.
Kristen just, Kristen, didn't you just say that?
I think the scope of this letter is specific to the altern- accepting the connector Road as being an appropriate, um, traffic improvement necessary to mitigate impact from the development. That's all this is doing. There are numerous conditions that PennDOT will have to make sure are met. If the wall is an issue that, that the applicant sounds like has had communication, and will have to submit documentation to PennDOT of the authority to move, um, the wall, if it is within the PennDOT right-of-way, then that's an issue with PennDOT.
But this, but you have the highway occupancy permit, application number thirteen oh seven thirty. If this, does this letter require the alternative transportation plan letter requ- requirement to, in order for the applicant to receive his HOP permit?
It, it is one of the con- it's one of many conditions. The day, the town, the PennDOT will not issue the HOP until they know that the township is satisfied with the alternative transportation improvements that's proposed, and clearly, the township has expressed that they want the connector Road to be built. So it's, it's a very limited scope of what we're telling PennDOT, that the connector Road is the appropriate traffic improvement the township wants to see happen for purposes of mitigating traffic impact from this development.
I understand that, but within the HOP permit itself, it's saying that this applicant is gonna be acquiring the property with the barn wall, so I think-
No, it doesn't say.
The township doesn't, the township doesn't issue the HOP, so that's something between the applicant and, and PennDOT.
All right, well, I think we could put this one in bed, but she, it, it would be approval by PennDOT, not by us. But that's understood by you, yes?
Of course.
Part of the actual HOP permit. It's one of the conditions, I think we need to clarify that first.
But the permit is coming from PennDOT, and it's, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's not going to be us making the decision. It would be PennDOT.
No, we're, we're accepting his alternative transportation plan.
We, we just had it on record. Go ahead, what's your-
I'm just saying, um, it, why should we be signing anything if they haven't, the owner hasn't signed off on it?
Jason, it's a different issue.
It's, the whole issue is the, the HOP permit.
No, you're not listening. You're not listening.
I'm, I'm listening to my solicitor just say that this is one of the several requirements.
The ATP is a letter that says, that in the traffic study, that we have to make off-site improvements, and the connector Road is the off-site improvement or is the improvement we're gonna make. That's what this ATP has to do with. The wall, Jason, listen.
I'm listening.
Listen.
I'm, I can do two things at once.
Okay, good. The wall is a whole different matter, which we've been through with PennDOT for eight years. The, what was included in that June twenty-eighth letter is what's called a condition statement. So it's a notarized obligation that we've made to PennDOT that we're gonna remove the wall and move it back two feet or whatever. I don't remember the exact distance we're moving, and to rebuild it in a certain fashion. And yes, we have, uh, an easement from the Waters family to use their property for construction work, but it's actually on PennDOT property. So they're two different matters.
I would suggest that if, if, Jason, if you're concerned about the wall issue, and you'd like to see documentation, that PennDOT is satisfied with- and you'd like to see documentation that PennDOT is satisfied with how the applicant is proposing to handle the ownership of the land that's needed, that you instruct that your traffic engineer stay involved in the HOP approval process and obtain that necessary documentation. But I do think that that's a separate issue than sending a letter agreeing that the connector road is the appropriate alternative transportation improvement. I think Andy is and has, you know, been asking to be involved in the HOP process and any meetings and, and correspondence that's being sent and, and delivered to PennDOT.
And Andy being, by the way, for the audience, the traffic engineer.
But it's no concern that the cultural resource notification contained the wrong tax parcel number and the PHMC has never reviewed the impact on the barn wall to this date?
That's not true either.
I have an email from the state saying that.
Since you raised that, we've since gotten the PHMC report. So, you've got a dated material.
I haven't seen that.
Okay, well.
Which, when was that sent?
Months ago.
Months ago. Maybe Scott, you could forward that to me then? And then finally, I believe I had emailed Noran about the escrow balance, and it appears that your balance is in the negative. And I, I think Jay had emailed back on June 11th of last year to me and said, "With respect to Carlino, our position in the past has been if they're behind, we cease reviewing of or processing anything pending." So, I don't think that we should be discussing this or approving anything until we make sure that the count is brought up to what the agree-upon rate is. I remember Noran was in the office, I'm sorry, in the audience, back when the three, the small minor subdivision was approved for Scott Rizman off of Hatfield Road, and there was an outstanding bill of $1,600. And she had said that she didn't think that township should approve the final plan until that was paid. But Scott had had a check in the audience and, and gave it to us, so we approved it. So, I think that we should probably not be reviewing things until we look at the balance and the escrows.
Well, there is, we were provided with a, an escrow report, and you are correct, it's negative. It's negative for $1,941. And that was the result of two bills that were paid, one on July 22nd, the other one on yesterday, on August 14th. I don't even know if Mr. Miller has been billed for those items yet, so...
Yeah, but you're not looking at the other chart that were $18,000 in the negative for the actual review of this plan. And in fact, it's been in the negative for the last 13 months, it appears. So, I think...
That's not correct.
Well, then, then the chart's wrong.
So...
Which chart are you looking at?
I'm looking at the one she gave, the 2010, 14, and 15 condemnation plan that, and then the other one is, the 2018 Plan Review, page five, says that is in negative $18,563.76. And it looks like it's been in the negative since September 6, 2018.
You're not understanding the report. Here's how that works.
Well, I actually asked her for clarification. I asked her what the parentheses meant, she responded, "They mean negative balance."
Okay, so, here's how, here's how the escrow works. It's negative, we replenish it. It gets negative, we replenish it. That's how this process works in any municipality. So, I think we're within the timeframe in which we have to replenish. So, I think we have a 10-year history of paying our escrows. Would you agree with that, Scott?
Yes.
Well, I'm not questioning your ability or, or your longevity of, of payment. I'm just saying, for the last year, it's consistently been in the negative. I think that there's always required to have a $10,000 balance. So, I think that it's not a matter of what you did in the past, I think it's a matter of now, that if we're not reviewing other projects with balances not paid, I don't think we should be reviewing yours, that's all.
So, Kristen.
Yeah?
Would it be appropriate to have a discussion on this topic tonight with the understanding that if Supervisor Winters is, is correct and we have a, we have to right the pot, so to speak, that we can, that we can do that within the next, say, three business days and hold this till then? Not hold it, but we can vote on it tonight, sign it tonight if needed or not?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what Mr. Miller said, at least when I've ever inquired about it, is accurate, that when the township sends them notification that the escrow number has gone into a negative number, they replenish it. I mean, I can't even imagine how much money they've paid to the township for the escrows thus far. So, to me, to me, I think you always have the ultimate hammer when you don't, you don't allow and you don't release plans for recording if there's outstanding fees owed. So, to me, I'm comfortable with this letter. There's still a lot of things that have to be met and conditions have to be met before any plans could be released to be recorded. So, I'm, given that it's not that significant an amount and it went into negative, as of yesterday, it sounded like, from Jay's comment, I don't have a problem with you approving it.
He was looking at the 2015.
And just having, having Noran send a letter tomorrow saying, please replenish it in this amount.
I think, Kristen, I think the last check we received, it was June 27th, so there's been several billing cycles.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at one report that shows on July 5th, we deposited, Mr. Miller deposited $23,232.50, which brought the balance up to be positive in one of those accounts, so it's...
That was the condemnation account. I'm looking at the 2018 Plan Review, which is the first one that she listed. And then when I, I responded and said, "What do the parentheses mean throughout the columns?" And she said that, that indicates a negative balance. So, it's not a matter of, you know, you pay money, you, then it becomes negative again. It's, it's a matter of, we require a positive escrow of at least $10,000 in our escrow. I don't understand what's so different about this one.
And in the condemnation, it looks, the final entry there, they're...
That's the negative 1,800, I believe?
No.
1,941?
Well, we just got these when we came in, so that...
Well, she, she had given to us this afternoon, I just, I reviewed it earlier.
I didn't see them until I got here, so, yeah, that's the negative 18,000.
If, if I may, I, I've written the, the spreadsheet that you're reviewing. There, there are two columns, and I just want to make sure that it's clear, that there's, there's two columns, and, and one would be the, the actual surplus or deficit in the account. And the other would be what the deficit is plus what it takes to get that to the positive balance that's required, depending on which of the three escrow accounts we're talking about. So, so in other words, a party could owe, if the balance is supposed to be $3,000 and it is a negative $10, the bill would be for $3,000 and $3,010. So, there's, I, I think that clarifies the two columns.
But part of the negative balance that's showing on here is to bring it up to $3,300.
Correct. And so, let's use an example of one of the three escrows that has a, a requirement to maintain a positive balance of $3,000. You know, two, or frankly, one billing cycle is sufficient to completely exhaust the positive debt balance of 3,000. So, it does appear that the vast majority of entries show negative numbers. But that's because every entry will create a negative entry in that column. Because if it was 3,000 and the bill was for $1, it would show negative, you owe us a dollar.
Well, no, because there's columns that's in the positive as well, but it happens to be a year ago. And, I mean, I don't know why we're spending so much time on this. Our policy has been, if there's money owed, we're not going to review anything pending.
I, I'm suggesting that the, the only way that we would consistently have a balance of $3,000 is if we had electronic fund withdrawal from the applicant.
Well, or if we, if we, you know, we invoice him, the applicant, right away when we get them. There's been invoicing up to, up in August, but we haven't received any payments since June. So, I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying, it's not, we're not receiving it. So, what are we doing, reviewing things until we have a positive? Or, let's put it this way, a, a zero balance. So, that's been what we've done in the past. That's what Vice Chairman Fisher had emailed me June 11th of 2018. I don't see how much has changed, unless, I'm missing something.
I think that the, the email and the previous discussion was in reference to, we weren't, we wouldn't do final plan approval, we wouldn't send it out to our consultants and incur consulting expense. I don't think that pertains to something like this, which is confirming to PennDOT what our position is with respect to the ATP.
Well, sure it is. I mean, Jay, there's, it's attached with reviews that we've compensated our engineers for. Kristen's time reviewing it, Tom Estey's time reviewing it, every, every consultant's time reviewing it. We're still paying, you know, we're still paying our consultants, but we're not getting paid. So, I don't think that it, really, any kind of type of business comes in play, I think just in general.
So, here would be my recommendation. The, the product has already been reviewed. It's been reviewed by the engineers, it's been reviewed by ourselves, and it's been reviewed by our solicitors. I started to, to ask earlier, if we were to have a vote on this, whichever way it goes, are you able to right the pot, so to speak, in the account and, and, and get that up to a positive?
We can give you a check tomorrow.
Perfect.
Well, then, why didn't you give us a check back in June? You know, we keep hearing about these promises, but we haven't really been too productive on your end.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, this is the first time I've heard about it tonight.
I've been complaining about this since I've been elected, that we've been constantly financing and bankrolling this development plan, and we haven't been getting our, you know, using taxpayers' money, and we have not been reimbursed. In fact, I believe back in '17, when the third plan was approved, final approval, there was a negative balance of $60,000. I mean, that's just, to me, it's just crazy. But, you know, I'm just, I'm just one board member, so...
All right, so the, the understanding is, before we vote on this tomorrow, that, that the account we brought...
Vote tonight and condition it upon receipt of a check. Just have Noran send us something that tells us what to do.
She just sent you one last week.
Okay.
Kristen, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
All right, so I'll leave it up to, I know you had your concerns, do you have any concerns?
No.
All right, I would feel it appropriate then, if you wanted to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we authorize release of the August 15th, 2019 letter to Francis J. Haney at PennDOT regarding the alternate transportation plan acceptance, conditioned upon Carlino bringing the, all the escrow accounts to hang with the current outstanding balance on all the escrow accounts.
And, and all other conditions brought upon by the engineers. I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on.
The second part of that, Kyle, just is, it's, it's, the subdivision under XIA, it says authorization page of compensation. I did send the board an email this afternoon indicating that I went back and looked through resolutions that were previously approved by the Boards of Supervisor, authorizing the declaration of taking that was filed, Resolution 15 of 2014, specifically authorized the township solicitor and township staff to take all necessary action as may be necessary and appropriate to implement the resolution. And the resolution authorized the declaration of taking, as well as directing the payment of estimated just compensation. I explained that we have appraisals for the land that was condemned. We need, we have checks, Scott has checks at the township for the estimate of just compensation. I believe that prior resolutions, which this current board has provided the stance, or a majority of this board has provided the stance that they support the declaration of taking and defense of the, the taking action. So, obviously, the township participated in the legal proceedings and the legal challenges that were filed by BVA and LNR to the condemnation. Those challenges, as far as the condemnation matter, are over. And under the eminent domain code, it's now appropriate to tender the estimate of just compensation. This is not the final say in the matter. Obviously, both parties, well, if, if either party wanted to petition for a board of view, and when I say either party, I mean, there's three parties here, BVA, LNR, whose property was condemned, and the township have a period of five years to petition for a board of view if they don't agree with the estimate of just compensation. We understand that they will not accept that estimate of just compensation as full and final payment, and therefore, most likely, will file for a petition for a board of view. The township will then have to participate and present evidence in support of what they believe the values of the condemned land is. So, that process is, you know, will be worked through the board of view and then ultimately, probably a court. But this is just another step that the eminent domain code authorizes after the declaration of taking is filed.
Kristen, I do have a couple of questions for you regarding to this. Who, who prepared the appraisals for the, to determine what the estimated just compensation would be for the township? Was it...
The appraisal, the township obtained appraisals from William Wood and Company, and the developer had appraisals prepared by A.R. Hughes and Company. The township will seek to have approval to utilize the, the, excuse me, the appraisals that were completed by A.R. Hughes and Company. And they will be basically the appraisals I think the township will rely upon if and when we have to go to the board of view and have expert witnesses testify.
So, what was the...
It doesn't matter, and I actually, I asked that question as well. I don't typically do eminent domain litigation. I asked my partner, Michael Gill, who is very well-versed in eminent domain, and he said there's absolutely nothing inappropriate with having the appraiser who has ethical standards they have to adhere to. If they were asked to perform it on behalf of the applicant, but then commissioned the work to say that the township may, you know, may rely upon those values, then the township is, is well within their rights to use those appraisals to tender the estimate of just compensation.
What was the, what was the actual total for just the Spence parcel? For the LNR parcel, for the, I believe, 1.9 acres?
Um, 900, excuse me, $95,000 was what the appraisal I have in my hands right now is.
Is 95,000 for just that parcel?
Mm-hmm.
And I, I'm just a little bit confused because, because the applicant had offered to purchase that property for 125,000. And how did it get appraised lower for that?
Jason, we're not appraisers. We have to rely upon somebody who's an expert in the field. Appraisal change based on market conditions, they change over time. So, we can't question, I don't, it's not my prerogative to, to read the report and try to take issue with it. Quite honestly, I don't know the rules and the laws that they follow, and I don't know, and I don't follow the comps that they're using. So, I, I'm not sure that anybody other than the appraiser can answer those questions, and that's something that will be vetted at the board of view.
I guess, from my, you know, emails previously today, even in fact, I had voiced my concern to the board about not being able to collect if there is additional monies owed after the just compensation is paid, that we have no financial security as a township to make sure that the township is reimbursed based on the fact that we had pledged our general funds at the time of the declaration of taking. And, you know, I think when the applicant, the township had supported the, the Pennsylvania RAC P grant for $1 million, the state had, one of the requirements was the applicant had to sign personal liability as well as his company to protect the taxpayers of Pennsylvania. And I think that, I think the township, I think the board, I think it's our responsibility to protect taxpayers in our township from the general funds and whatnot. I think that we need to have a discussion and, and possibly get a, a guarantee in writing, a personal guarantee.
I believe Solicitor Oste answered that today.
He never responded to my follow-up question.
Well, I think, I mean, I think Tom and I talked about it at great lengths today, and I don't think we need to go into it all and settle it this evening. I think two things that I will say is that we do have an irrevocable letter of credit that's posted by the applicant with the township that can still stay in the township's hands until such time as the final, under the memorandum of understanding, must stay in the township's hands until the final determination is made. hands until the final determination is made as to what the just compensation is. So, that's one level. And that number is not far off of what, it actually exceeds the number that the appraisals were relying upon, say as the value. And the second thing is, as part of the development approval, the applicant is required to build the connector road and the improvements on the plan in lieu of paying a traffic impact fee, and, and they would be entitled to a credit, let me say it that way. They would be entitled to a credit for the cost of the construction. If it turns out that the estimate of, that the actual just compensation that has to be paid is something, and we ask, as we're required under the MOU, ask the developer to pay the balance, and they refuse to pay the balance, I think we would have the ability to not offer that, you know, whatever credit, whatever that difference was, they would not get that as part of their credit for the construction of the road. There's also developer agreements that you'll be asked to sign and financial security agreements, and Tom and I will discuss with the board and the applicant possibly a way to address your concern and your fear.
Um, but what, what my concern is, I'm not concerned about the development agreement or the financial security agreement, or a, or a local letter of credit. My concern is the board of view, this, this lawsuit has been 10 years now, I believe, way before my time, and I feel that what is the township, how are we gonna be protected if the giant plan is approved, built, use and occupancy permits approved, and connector road's done, and we're still in court over how much the property that we have taken?
That's what I'm suggesting. That's what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting as part of financial security, and again, this has not been ironed out, this is a discussion item, is that we could ask a develop, the developer to post some amount of money that they would not be released to them until such time as the final just compensation figure is determined by a court. So, that, that happens oftentimes. If there's things within the development that are scheduled to occur post them constructing and getting a used occupancy, it's not out of the ordinary, and in fact, for ma, there's maintenance bonds that are posted. So, there, there are some ideas that we talked about internally today, and I don't think that needs to be completely, you know, decided before the board agrees to, to tender these payments. This is something that's been, these appraisals have been completed for some time. It's one step in the process. We know that there are many future steps that have to be, that will go through with the board of view and a court system before it all gets, you know, 100% resolved.
But, why put the cart before the horse? Why wouldn't we just, it's been?
I don't think we're putting the cart before the horse. I think we're adhering to what the law provides, and we're adhering to the township's obligations under the memorandum of understanding, and the development agreement that was approved in June. I'm sorry, the develop, the development that was approved in June.
I understand it, but if, but we're talking about, we filed the declaration of taking back in 2014, I believe, and we have not paid?
Correct, November 17.
We have not made payment, we have not made payment yet. So, what's the big rush? Why don't we, before we go ahead and approve just compensation, why can't we sit down as a board and discuss options to protect the township's interest?
That's, that's one option. That's up to the board to decide how to do it. I think it makes sense to pay the estimate of compensation and start, there's a statute of limitations in terms of when a board of view would be requested, and I think that we should start to get that statute running.
Yeah, that's, I think that we need to have a lot of conversations that we haven't had a chance to, everyone get together to talk about. So, I think that we need, I think there's some issues that we need to hash out before we approve anything regarding just compensation. I mean, we haven't, has the township paid LNR or BVA $4,000 towards anything that the eminent domain?
It's a reimbursement provision. It's a reimbursement provision. They have to send us invoices for the expenses they've incurred, and then it would be paid. And it's done as part of a final settlement with all the just compensation being paid at one time and a release agreement being signed.
Well, then, why, why are we offering to pay Beth and Steve Ulrich for $4,000? That's for eminent domain code, and we haven't even talked about anything. I mean, I think that?
I explained that earlier. I said that, in order to get the discussion moving forward in a positive direction, and to have the all-works feel that they have qualified experts assisting them, they're not township consultants, I thought it was an appropriate suggestion that they be paid or reimbursed for expenses that they incur. And I was saying that under the eminent domain code, that would be what their legal entitlement would be if the board was to condemn their land, not that suggesting that, that you were going to. It was a suggestion, and I, I think that, quite honestly, I think it, it helps, because they hired a lawyer, and they, I don't know if they hired an engineer or not, but it, it got the dialogue starting. And they came to your meeting tonight and suggested an alternative. So, I don't really think that's relevant to this case where there actually was a declaration of taking filed, and clearly, there will have to be payment made to the landowners whose land is being condemned, and clearly, they'll be entitled to the $4,000 of legal fees.
Well, I understand, and I think that, all I'm asking is, I think before we make a decision tonight, I think that we should sit down as a board in executive session and talk about, you know, the different options and my, at least my concerns, and it's been five years since the declaration of taking. I don't think another month is gonna hurt things if we can sit down and talk about it. That's all I'm asking.
And that's, that's up to the board. That's a board decision.
Kristin, I'll leave it up to you for your recommendation on what we should do tonight. Obviously, I trust immensely your decision and, and your, your opinion. So, I'll leave it up to you, and then we'll discuss it after you speak.
Yeah, I mean, I think I've already given you my recommendation. I don't see any harm. I think that prior resolutions allowed it to occur. I think it, it's not the be-all, end-all. It's not as if I'm saying, pay this, and then that's all they're getting. It's, it's the beginning of a process. It's the beginning of a legal process that was started back in 2014, and probably will continue for another five, six, seven, eight years. So, I don't see any harm. I think we have ways to, I think there are already protections and security posted at the township to cover Jason's concerns, and we will continue to have a dialogue before the board accepts the financial security agreement and developer agreements to see if we have some other ideas.
Well, Tom Estes had said that I was correct, that there is no financial security to, on this subject beyond the 125. So, if, you know, if it's, if this was a resolution of 14, I think that we should wait.
I think we are, we gotta be careful, because there are legal papers that are being discussed right now that are client privileged, and I think you just gotta be careful on what we're talking about right now.
Well, we're talking about identification. I'm saying that, he had told me that we didn't have any.
I'm aware, but I just want you to be aware that there are papers that?
I understand.
All right, so, you know?
I just think we should wait, what's another 30 days to, Jay, do you have a problem waiting 30 days to put it on agenda for September or a morning session? We're meeting next week, I think.
Um, no, I don't have a problem with waiting briefly, but I, I agree with Kristin. I'd like to get the clock started on this, so, but.
Can I, can I make a point and a request? We've been at this for many years. Our resolution with this board was passed in 2014.
Not this board.
With the township's board at the time. It's, it's still binding. There's a memorandum of understanding. I agree with Kristin. There'll be all manner of board of views and various appraisals over the years to come, but we need to get going on this. We've waited, and you have an obligation to us as well. We've put up, the township's been holding cashier's checks of ours in excess of the appraised values. The higher of the appraisals is being used by the township of, of the, of the two firms that appraised the ground, and it's time to get on with this. This is.
Well, in all due respect, Mr. Miller, I remember that there was a time, some years ago, where we wanted to move forward with the just compensation, and you were the one who wanted us to wait for it. So, I don't think, I understand that Mr. Winters is relatively new to this process, waiting 30 days for him to address questions and, and make sure that he feels comfortable with it. Or he doesn't, but at least he gets that opportunity, I don't think is unreasonable.
So, how about this? Our next morning session meeting would be when, Scott?
September 5th, I believe.
Um, so that would be a little over two and a half weeks. With that?
I think we'd have to meet, you know, if it takes one time, and we get it done before then, fine. If not, I think at least put on the agenda for September's night meeting and be done with it.
Um, why don't we put it on for the morning session if we know within a week in advance that we're not gonna meet that deadline? You ran us the opportunity to the next evening session.
Yeah, do you want us to attend the September 5th meeting?
I, I think the fair way to do this would be, we would give you at least three business, four to business days. We'll plan on it for the, for the, plan on it for the 5th, but we would give you at least four or five business days notice if we can't come to an agreement on, on this. And then we would then make our decision binding then on the, on the evening, works of the evening session?
All right.
Thank you. Okay, Kristin, you got that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so that wraps up that, that section. Now, we're gonna go on to the Simpson's 350 Creek Road zoning hearing application.
Good evening.
Is everybody from?
Thank you. Adam Brower with EB Walsh and Associates, also Scott Simpson, the property owner of 350 Creek Road, also known as the Woodacre Homestead, Woodacres Farm. Scott bought it a couple of years ago.
March, March last year.
Yep. And he does currently live in the township, actually just up Creek Road a little bit. He has bought this with the hopes of doing some work on the existing house to make this his, his new property and home for his family. To do that, it is a several hundred year old house, gorgeous property, but it's a several hundred year old house. It has its shortcomings for a, a family today. And in addition to that, the property, although very nice and very scenic, obviously has access today, but is a challenge for, for access period, but, but certainly can't be accessed for emergency vehicles. So, what Scott is requesting of the township is actually, it's two special exceptions that are closely related. One is for disturbance of the steep slope for the expansion of the house. That would be this area here. And then the second, and I tried to do this in color, the orange being the existing driveway system. It does go to some outbuildings that you don't see, and I should back up a little bit, and I, I think you're probably familiar with the property, but just to back up a little, the, this particular property is 123 acres and change. There, if you recall, at least Jay and I was on the board, a few years ago, we came through with this property, and it was sub, a lot was subdivided off for a single house. Scott has bought that back to reconsolidate the property, and he also has purchased some of the adjacent properties. I think total, it's 157?
159, yeah.
159 acres. What I have on this plan is really just that, we did a survey of that surrounding area of the homestead. I do have a plan underneath that shows the 123 to give you a relation of where the house is. But, but this is just that specific area. So, you see, for example, the driveway coming off, that's going to a, an outbuilding that's there. Similarly, this driveway seems to be continuing off the property. That's going to, I guess, an old tenant house?
Yep.
That, that's still there. So, there is driveways there. There is an existing driveway that literally goes right by the house. It's very challenging to utilize. And then with the barn here, which I crosshatched, you have the driveway literally doing 90-degree turns, which makes it literally impossible for anything other than a small car to, to navigate. So, what he is looking to do, in addition to the house expansion, is provide a new access, which would be the pink, coming up shortly tying into that existing driveway, and then bringing it into a, a new turnaround area here with a garage, which actually, and Scott can speak to this, that actually is restoring what was historically the front of the house. Right now, they're, they're utilizing, in essence, what is the back of the house. So, that would be bringing that back into, into play. The driveway does go also through some steep slope area. They are taking down, you see the, some of the crosshatched area, is some of the outbuildings that would be removed. Certainly wants to keep the barn. He has, and you can speak to it, he, he runs a CSA.
Yes.
And the barn is part of that. It's, you actually have it on your current property up further up Creek Road. But, and Scott, if you wanna speak to some of the circulation with the equipment you have, with the cattle and everything, that, that really makes the current driveway system not, not usable for, for the larger equipment he's operating on the farm.
Yes, so, well, we live on the other side of Dallin Forge on 282 Forge Hill Farm. We have the CSA there. We're currently in the midst of selling our family farm in central PA, which is an orchard, but also a cattle farm. And so, I approached Mrs. Whitaker after Doc Whitaker passed away, and, and basically curious as to whether I could lease some of the land to run some cattle, and then that's when it all turned into that she didn't want any part of the farm anymore, wanted to get, get rid of it. So, so my goal was to bring cattle down this direction anyways. So, basically, speaking with, I mean, I don't know how, how many times you guys are driven by the property or anything, but this is a nose.
I thought you were gonna ask how many times we've been asked about bringing cattle into our township.
Oh, no. Not yet, but the sign still has Black Angus on the front there. But, but no, that is such a steep slope that there's no way of doing something of that sorts. And, you know, bringing livestock trailers and things like that, I've actually ended up going this way and going up through the grass fields and things like that. And, you know, it'd just be, especially in the winter times and things like that, it'd just be much better to have some kind of solid surface, so.
So, we're in front of the township with an application, again, for a special exception, and it's the two, again, for the house addition and the driveway, particularly with driveway for emergency vehicles, and, and again, for his access to the fields with the livestock. We did go to the planning commission earlier this month. They gave a favorable recommendation. They did with, with the understanding, there was discussion about stormwater management. We certainly know if we get a favorable vote from the zoning hearing board, that meeting's in September. We certainly understand we got to come back to the township with the permits for the house, for the grading, for, including stormwater management. So, certainly isn't, wouldn't be the, the last stop of this plan. In fact, I only candidly put enough engineering, for example, with the driveway, to understand the extent of disturbance of the steep slope we would need to install the driveway and not exceed the, the code with respect to slope of the driveway, but also create something that was hopefully as close to, to maintaining grade as we could. So, we, we've done some very, very preliminary engineering, just to ascertain some of those things, but, but by no means is this the plan that, that, that we would consider fully engineered with all the, the other code requirements.
And I, I'm looking at a very small picture, but what material were you planning on for? Was it going to be macadam?
The proposed?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the current orange is currently macadam, or is it gravel?
Uh, I, I think it's, it's all macadam. Now, some of it's in
Smashed up.
in poor shape. It's on its way to being gravel. And he, again, Scott is going to be, continue to utilize the barn. So, there, for the most part, the driveway around the barn, although this area really doesn't work, this, for example, does give access to the upper level of the barn. So, he does need to keep that. The one stretch, and it's about 160 feet, that we would get rid of, is the stretch that I mentioned, that, that literally runs by the house, and is, is even tough to get by with anything bigger than, than a small car. So, we are looking to remove that area, but, but, and, and some of the outbuildings. But again, still recognizing that overall would be an increase and imperious that, that will require stormwater management.
Would it be possible, I'm sorry to interrupt, just a point of order. Would it be possible for you to realign so that the laser is in the middle of your drawing?
I can do that.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Sal, was at the planning commission meeting when Mr. Simpson had spoken, he was, stated that he was interested in making sure that the stormwater management facilities were updated and working properly, you know, to cover anything. So, you know, I personally have no issue.
I don't either. I would recommend, I would make a motion that we recommend to the zoning hearing board the approval of the request for the special exceptions.
And you understand we have no final say, but good luck.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, so now we're gonna move on to ordinance task force updates, recommendation for the C. for the CCPC Act.
Thank you, the, excuse me, the ordinance task force at their last meeting in July recommended that the planning commission consider an ordinance amendment which actually amends both the subdivision and the zoning ordinances, in the subdivision ordinance, Article four, Section three fifty twelve, review of sketch plan, and Section three fifty nineteen, recording of final plan, and Article five, Section three fifty twenty-five, final plan. In the zoning chapter, Article five, Section three fifty, or I'm sorry, three ninety-nine twenty-one, use regulations, Article five, six, Section three ninety-nine twenty-seven, use regulations, Article seven, Section three ninety-nine thirty-three, and Article twelve, Section three ninety-nine, historic resource impact study. The, the first revisions for the zoning ordinance have to do with the changing the existing process for schools from special exception to conditional use, and all of those, those are the three of our residential zoning districts. So, the planning commission recommended that the board submit these ordinance amendments to the county planning commission for the required Act two forty-seven review.
Do you have any questions?
I make a motion that we submit for Chester County Planning Commission Act two forty-seven review, the combined ordinance amendments just outlined by Scott.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
There are no ordinance resolutions for consideration tonight, I'll turn it out to the public for comment on agenda items. Seeing crickets, we'll move on, this notice, the board of supervisors met in executive session on August eighth, two thousand and nineteen to discuss legal matters, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.